Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the August 24th, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting, both again in virtual and on Zoom and in person. And crowds are getting a little bigger, which is a good sign. As always, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 10th, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 10th, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. The First Selectmen's Updates, let me start now. Before I start my updates, I, one of the items is a, under New Business, it's a first read, is a discussion of the flag policy. And there was a statement that was put out yesterday by the, and it was, I guess, posted by the DTC, a political organization here in town that was false, and I will have a reaction to that with the facts when we get to that, I bless you, when we get to that, that item. So I just wanted to get that out of the way, in case I know some people are here today for that one issue. So going forward, the Bowlin investigation was completed. I want to thank Stan Twardy and his team and our legal counsel here who helped in the selection of Stan. The investigation showed, thank God, that the, the incident was an isolated one, was no evidence of widespread bias. And the purpose of that is to make sure that when the public trust is breached, that we do an investigation to make sure that doesn't happen again. So hopefully, that's out there. And as Ira Bloom told me when, a long time ago, a dear friend here in Greenwich, he said, when you get in the fall, it's, it's the beginning of the silly season. So when you read things online, picking apart things all the time, it's the silly season. So take it with a grain of salt and know the truth is usually somewhere not too, a little far away from where the, the actual statements are. But if you ever see anything like that, feel free to call me at all, 203-536-5659. Happy to set the record straight on anything. The Glenville Forum we had on the 14th was very, very successful. We had a couple hundred people there. I plan to do another one, I plan to do another one, probably after the Glenville-Penwick Valley Jam. And we plan to do it with some town department heads, just to answer some of the questions that came up there. It was very pop, it was very, I think, important to have that forum, to update people on things. And I think most people who reached out were, or all the people reached out, were very happy to have that forum. That's something we do all the time, or I do all the time. It was Lauren's neighborhood, so she was included on that one. But I'll be doing many other ones in the coming weeks and months, as I've done the last four years. I returned to Camp Simmons, where I went as a child to cook burgers and hot dogs with Senator Fazio. That was fun, on the 17th. Happy 87th birthday to Doc Orico, a Coscobb treasure. Doc celebrated his 87th this week. And we have another one coming up in Coscobb. I can't say her name, because I don't think she knows there's going to be a celebration for her in a couple of weeks. Fire Department swore four new firemen in the other day, three in person, one virtually. He came down with COVID, but we'll do his in person, hopefully, when he's a little bit better. And for the first time ever, I swore in a chaplain for the Fire Department. So that was an exciting day for, an historic day for the Fire Department. The Arch Street, you may have read in the paper that we're looking at enhancing that Arch Street corner there that became popular a couple of years ago. We have a beautiful memorial there, an obelisk and a flag that's not lit up at night. And there's a water fountain that doesn't work. So I'm thinking, putting some water features there, maybe lighting them up at night and lighting up the obelisk and drawing attention to a very special place that has a lot of meaning. But we're looking into a lot of things right now. I've had several meetings and may even put out a contest to, to name that square, because as you know, right across from the War Memorial is Colonel Bowling, and then a few feet above that is the Vietnam Memorial. So it's a very special place, and we, we'd love to highlight that a little bit more for our residents. Saturday, 26th, we will be having a dedication for my dear friend, all of our friends, Winston Robinson, who passed away this year. We're going to be naming the community room an Armstrong Court for Winston. I spent several events there over the years with Winston, and I know he'd be very, very proud of this. So if you knew Winston, you loved him, and if you loved him, if you're around that day, please stop in, stop by and pay tribute to our, our friend. On the 31st, another 100th birthday. I don't know what's in the water in Greenwich, but it's good. Winona Mullis, a great person, is celebrating her 100th. So we're going to go over to the Senior Center that day and celebrate Winona on her first 100. And on September 5th, having a meeting with EverSource on upcoming projects here in Greenwich, more details later. September 6th, a Red Cross Board meeting, followed by a ribbon cutting there. September 7th, the First Friday Group will be having Chief McQ, our own Chief McQ, as the special guest. So if you haven't been to one of those meetings, they're fun and certainly you'll love to hear from the chief. September 9th, the Coscobb Library is having an open house, starting at 12:00. And on September 11th, as always, we do at 8:46 ceremony over at Coscobb Park, and then over at Glenville that evening. Both are very, very, you know, solemn ceremonies. And then we will be having a ceremony for Chief Rick Strain on September 13th over at Round Hill. The chief is retiring. He spent 40 years as a chief, 50 years as a volunteer. That's something, and that's dedication, and that's Greenwich. So we're happy to celebrate with Rick and his, his family. And we'll leave off with a couple of events coming up. 75th anniversary for the Byram Vets, September 15th. Mark your calendars for that. Great organization over on the West Side. And an organization that's near, dear to me is the St. Lawrence Club. They're going to be celebrating their 100th Columbus Day. So not only do we celebrate Christopher Columbus, we're going to be celebrating the St. Lawrence Club, which was founded by immigrants from a little town in the hills of Calabria called Rose. And happy to be a descendant of those people who built that, so very proud day. And then just on another note, Reverend Thomas Nims was in a severe accident, motorcycle accident, and he's doing okay. He was up in New England. He's, right now, he's not responding. He's trying to recover. His daughter has been in contact with Deputy Chief Gray and myself. Just keep him in your prayers. I wouldn't send him a note now, because he's probably getting a lot, but as soon as he gets better, I'm sure he'd love to hear from everybody. So we wish our friend a speedy recovery. And I will look over to Lauren for her updates. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning. Thanks, Fred. Good morning, everyone. Just piggybacking on the forum, yes, very well attended, and I guess along the lines of silly season. I was there because Glenville is my neighborhood. I've lived there for the past 20 years, and God willing, I'll be there another 20. But I guess with all the 100 birthdays, God willing, I'll be there another 40 years, if I could see 100. I had gone about the dog park and met with all the adjacent neighbors. I just really felt committed to make sure that their voices were heard during the forum and excited to participate in the next one. Speaking of dedication, we finally have some appointments today to round out SNAP Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee. So we'll have a full complement of staff there that source all of the great candidates for the boards, commissions, and committees in town. And with the town clerk and our Secretary of SNAP, we've been busy since late spring and throughout the summer, looking for software to streamline the process of having our residents nominate for different boards, commissions, and committees, having it go through the Board of Selectmen for our interview process, and then ultimately for the boards, commissions, and committees that need to be appointed by the RTM to have it flow into their systems. So kind of bring us into the current century and, and make sure that our volunteers' data is private. And right now, the software that we selected is going through town IT and cyber risk assessment before we can deploy it. But it's super exciting to, to have that technology in place. And that's my update for today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure your math is a little off. You meant to say 70 years before your 100, correct? Good morning, Janet.
Good morning. It has been a very pleasant end of summer, and it's clear that activities are going to start after Labor Day. So I'm just going to say, I hope everyone has a wonderful Labor Day weekend, and I wish all of our students and their families and our teachers and staff a very happy return to school.
Very nice note to leave, leave off on. Yes, we wish them all a happy and successful school year. Okay, going on to all businesses, only one, and that's a request to review and appoint the Historic District Commission to be the study commission. Whoops. I'll stall a little bit. To be this, to be the study committee for the Putnam Cottage/NAPS Tavern venue over on the Post Road, one of our oldest buildings. As you know, it's, we're General Putnam, as the myth goes. Went in there a few times, and it was a bar that he liked to frequent. And if you've never been in there, it's a beautiful place, a huge fireplace that's where they slept in the old days, and makes me feel tall, because I guess the people were really short back then. So if you, those ceilings are like this. So it's the one time I get to feel, feel like Larry Bird. Okay, I think Ann has joined us. Good morning, Ann.
Good morning.
Can you put your, up the volume up just a little?
Uh, I, I seem to be a little blast right now.
Kind of hear you, but it's not very loud.
Um, is it very close? Is it free?
Yeah, yeah, it's very quiet, but we can, we can hear you.
I thought we were hearing you, but there's no sound there.
Uh, can you hear me now? Am I sounding better? Or should I talk louder?
Not yet.
I'm trying to get, I'm not quite sure what happened. Okay, hi, I can see myself.
Okay, but we can't hear you. I'm trying to think of what you can do. Can you go to your microphone, the little up arrow next to your microphone, and see if you're connected properly to your...
And Jenny, now there's feedback.
Yeah, I am boosted up as much as I can, but do I need to actually...
We could hear a little bit, but not...
This is not, this is the bottom. So, um, what I'm going to ask...
Do you...
I can, I can turn off this now. Unfortunately, I'm up there, and I can hear the voice off, and you can hear her through here, so hold on. I'm going to unmute myself.
Hold on. Give me a second, I'm going to switch.
Take your time.
Okay. Ann, can you talk again, please? Okay, we can't, I can't hear her here.
Jenny, what about the mute that's in the little corner over there that we're seeing on the screen?
Well, she... No, she's, um...
We, we heard her.
So that's here, because I've turned off the room audio, so we can use my computer audio.
Okay.
But just give me one second.
Okay.
It's very odd. I'm so sorry. This is, um... So Ann, you can't hear me?
She can.
But when you speak, so it's definitely on her, so, um, let me try one more thing. Give me a second. I'm going to do this. Ann, can you hear me now? And can you speak? It's very weird, because I can hear when I put my headphones on.
Do you want us...
Yeah, she could call in.
Yeah.
But then again, it's the room audio that's not working.
If she can call in, that would be, just to save some time here. Ann, can you, if you can hear me, can you call in? I, I can give you my cell number.
And then you can hold your...
Hopefully she got that. I'll, just in case I repeat it, 203-536-5659. Okay, Ann, can you hear me? Just, yes. Okay, I'm not getting anything on my phone. You, if there's, we have people waiting here, so maybe we can come back to Ann or do this next time if there's a, there may be an issue that we can't fix.
I, I can go get, I can get someone from facilities. That's all I can think of. It has something with the way this is configured.
Okay, I mean, do I have to make a motion to push this back in the agenda, or just...
Yeah, make it later on the agenda.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we move on to New Business.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Okay, well, we'll get back to you soon, Ann. Thank you. Okay, going on to New Business, we have three items. The first is the discussion of the flag policy for town buildings and a brief history of that. The town does not currently have a flag raising policy. As I meet with my friends who are mayors and First Selectmen and women around Connecticut, one close to us, they decided just to completely end it. It was getting controversial, and they just do the local, state, and federal. Here, having attended these flag raisings for a long time, I like them, and I think they bring a lot of sense of community to us. So I think the idea behind this policy, and it's only a first read, is to preserve the traditions that we really like. So the policy, the, the, flag raising is solely under the discretion of the First Selectmen, but we're, we're voting, we're looking at this as a board. And whether the flag low rings is, is, you know, usually when someone dies, a former First Selectman or town official, or anybody else that has something to do or meant something to the town. We decided with this flag raising policy, and Laura McGee, our town attorney, will come and explain this, is to automatically just do the state, the local, state, and federal, but to allow the Board of Selectmen the chance to vote on this. So St. Pat's and Columbus Day and Greek Independence and the Albanian flag and the Red Cross and the Pride and whatever, we, you know, we do so many of these things, to allow, allow the people to be able to come out there and celebrate them. I, I don't know of any we've ever had that has, has turned out bad. I think it's always been really good for the community. And so this is to preserve it, to get something on the books, because we started to get some requests from things that we may have had to say no to. And then my concern was that if we said no and someone took us to court, we may not win. And I don't want to put the town through that expense. And so this is a way for us to handle it. So if we know Columbus Day is coming up beginning of October, or St. Pat's is October 17th, or March 17th, sorry, that we know the month before, we're going to get this to the Board of Selectmen, so they can, they can vote on it and just confirm it and, and be done with it. Just to keep it, so there's a policy on the books, so people will know, oh, sorry, thank you. So people will definitely know what it is going forward, and there's something on the books in a, an attempt to preserve the traditions that I think are pretty cool here in town and have worked for many years. So with that, Laura, if you would like to come up and, and give us a brief rundown for our first read, thanks, Laura.
Good morning.
Morning.
So obviously, I'm here for the flag policy for the first read that's been submitted. And I know select person, Stone McWiggin, you added a few questions. I got back from vacation, was able to look into those as well. But I will say, the emanation and looking at flag policies, it really started from a Supreme Court decision for the city of Boston. They did not have a flag policy, and they, there was a flagpole outside of City Hall that raised all types of flags. And then it was determined by the Supreme Court that that was free speech, constitutionally protected free speech and not government's speech. And I think flags flown by municipalities should be protected as government's speech. And therefore, flag policies provide the standards for flag, for flying flags or seals or whatever it may be for the town. And in answering specific questions, I know that you had, you had asked how many other municipalities in the town, in the state have flag policies. We did contact CCM to determine that, to do some research, with a little bit of a caveat, because I've seen that CCM doesn't necessarily have all the updated information on another fair rank commission. I've determined a lot more municipalities have them now than have been reported by CCM. So I just wanted to say that as well. But at this juncture, it looks like, based on the information from CCM, there were five municipalities with flag policies, which is Colchester, Meriden, Southington, South Windsor, Tolent, but does not include Darien, which we know that Darien now has a flag policy as of 2022. Now, you also asked, what does CCM have to say about flag policies? They don't actually opine, they only provide research in relation and provide the information and flag policies ordinances, what have you, that's requested. But I did review those policies in the other municipalities and determined that some have complete bans. There's basically three options for flag policies. One would be, you know, a total ban for ceremonial or commemorative flags and just have the US flag, state flag, and town flag. Then there's the hybrid, which allows for commemorative flags for certain occasions. And I understand this town has a long tradition for celebrating many different groups. And then there is, you know, the free-for-all, if you, if you will, but I, that's dangerous to have all flags and all policies, because I think that takes it out of government's speech, quite frankly, which, as a town, you want control over the process and what is flown on town hall property or, you know, wherever that may be. So that is the emanation and the history. And quite frankly, I was surprised that not more municipalities in the state, at least, have been reported that have flag policies, because I think in light of the 2022 Supreme Court decision, it is guidance. And actually, the Supreme Court to the city of Boston, you know, suggested you should, you know, formulate a better flag policy, quite frankly. So, and you also asked, select person, whether the state of Connecticut has a flag policy, and so what that is. So the state Capitol has, raises flags, and that is run by the state Capitol Police. And they've had a flag policy in place since 1999, modified over, over the years. And they basically provide a list of flags that may be flown, and it, again, is more limited, well, limited in that it provides for all the United States Connecticut flag, state flags, other state flags, and any foreign jurisdiction that has, maintains diplomatic relations and military organizations, the, you know, veteran groups, et cetera. And then there's a list of flags, and they have a form with flag requests as well. So in formulating this draft policy for the town of Greenwich, at the request of the Office of First Selectmen to come before you, I would liken this policy to be a composite of looking at, you know, obviously restricting to the national, state, town flags, obviously as of right, and that's what happens, but also to allow to come before the Board of Selectmen for, you know, a proclamation or resolution to fly certain flags that you wish, you know, and desire to have flown. And then it provides for the protocols for half-staff, obviously commemorative, you know, in the event somebody unfortunately dies in the line of duty, what have you, or on certain, obviously, important holidays. Now, it also provides, borrowed from the Capitol Police, the state policy on allowing, you know, obviously, any foreign national government with, that maintains diplomatic relations with the, with the state, or, and that would be governed by the US Department of State as a standard. So just trying to put some standards into place and allowing, if it comes before the Board of Selectmen, to have a public forum and, you know, public debate, if you will. So I hope that that answered the specific questions that I wasn't able to answer since I was away on vacation. I said I verbally report here. I know this is first read, so to the extent anybody has questions or further information, I'm happy to report. I'm presuming this is going to a second read, so if you have any particular questions.
Thank you so much, Laura. Yeah, that, that was very thorough, and the whole purpose for me asking for this was to avoid the third possibility, which is a free-for-all, which is not good. The first one, you know, our neighbor to the north did, but again, that would have precluded us from some traditions that we, we really like here in Greenwich. So I think this is the right one, personally speaking. I don't know how my colleagues will, will vote on it, but it would reserve the right for us to do this. So one quick question, though, on the foreign flags, just for clarification for peoples, because this came up, and this could sometimes be maybe the most controversial. If there's, we wanted to raise a flag of a foreign country, that's still under, would be within our jurisdiction as of our vote here, or is that guided by, you mentioned before, just for clarification, by the federal government?
No, that, it clearly says in number two of the policy, that any flags of foreign national governments may be displayed upon resolution of the Board of Selectmen. So I just want to clarify that that also comes before you all.
Thank you. Because that, as innocent as that seems, that could become controversial, especially if there's sometimes a war may be going on, and there may be, clearly, people in the country may not be settled on who's the aggressor and who's not, and you could end up with, you know, some issues there. So I think this is the way to, to do it and to have a first and second read. That's why we ask that people get these in a month before, because it will give us not only a chance to discuss it, but to hear the two-week period for, to get some public input from it.
And if I may ask a question of all of you, because I think, I, I hear that you mentioned the 30 days, and that I do not have procedure in here, but we could add, you know, a 30-day advanced request requirement. And it may be also good to add to whom that request goes, whether that's the town administrator, the town clerk. So I think that that could potentially improve having those additions to it so that there is... so that there is a clear process.
Yeah, and we could always, if somebody missed a deadline, we could always amend an agenda, but it's just to get people used to this so we don't miss anything, we're not scrambling at the end. That's just trying to foresee possible issues going forward, not only for this board, but for future boards. But I'll, you know, the 30 days is fine. But again, I think we have other means, if somebody misses it, to adjust the schedule. But as long as that's put in the policy, you know, that, you know, if somebody missed it for whatever reason, we would have the right to.
Discretion?
Discretion to amend an agenda so we could take it up.
And I would think if it's a Board of Selectmen policy, would a request for a flag raising be submitted to the town administrator? Or?
Yeah.
I think.
Because ultimately, I mean, the research came back that it's the First Selectmen that has the flag policy. But we're doing it together as a board. So I think the town administrator, COO, would be the person. Or Ken Borsek.
Yeah, right now, they have been going to the executive assistant to the First Selectmen.
I think, I think, I think to copy in both, just to both would be good.
Or we could just put to the Office of the First Selectmen?
Which is going to go to Ken.
That covers?
Yeah.
That covers it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or?
No, I was just going to say, thanks for the answers to the questions. It's certainly helpful to understand what other towns and certainly what the state is doing. I read this as the hybrid. I think probably people are focused on item number three. And I think we've demonstrated, since at least we've been in office, that we've been inclusive of everything that's come, not in an official way. I think it's been in sort of a, can we do this to the office? I like the idea of procedure, because I sometimes get the email. I'm thinking of you in the back, hey, tomorrow, can we hang this? So, and then I think we start to calendarize things. And then there's, you know, an expectation and that might alleviate some of the, if we wanted to go through a procedure where it was like 30 days in advance. We know when Columbus Day is. We know when Domestic Violence Awareness Month is. We know when Breast Cancer Awareness Month is. They don't change. So I think, and we know when Pride Month is. So when we have these ones that are just typical, it would probably just be easy. But it lets everybody kind of calendarize it and be aware of it. I like the awareness part. Nobody's scrambling. Yeah, that's my thought.
Yeah, I agree. And I think, as Reverend Ninn said, we were the first town, I think, to do the Juneteenth a couple of years ago. And, you know, it's gone well. And I think all of these have been really well-received and attended. So I kind of like it and I hope that the feedback we get from the public agrees. But that's why we do a first read. Got it?
Thank you. I still have a lot of questions, so I guess the, do you want me to go one by one? Or would you like me to kind of give you my list of questions all at once? And thank you for all the research that you have done and all the work that's gone into this.
Absolutely. However, it's Sutu.
All right. Let's try to go one by one. And you've answered some of the questions I already had, so thank you. Because I did want to know what the difference is between what we currently do and what we're proposing to do. I did want to know what, yeah, what is the state policy? How does that work? Because our policy seems to reference that. And then I think you're right, that it's clause three of the proposed policy that I think people have the most questions about. And specifically, you know, will we preserve Pride and Juneteenth? Because those are not official flags, but these are celebrations that I think our community really embraces. So, yeah, so what is what you're saying is the Board of Selectmen would have to vote on every flag raising that is not the U.S. state and town flag?
That is my read. Well, it also says by proclamation of the First Selectmen or by resolution of the Board of Selectmen. So a proclamation by the First Selectmen also serves as the ability to fly other flags or by resolution of the composite board.
Okay, but there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any, as you'd say, as-of-right list? I mean, so Pride is a federal and state holiday? Oh, sorry, I said the wrong thing. Juneteenth is a federal and state holiday? And Hartford flies the Juneteenth flag, I believe. Or we could at least check to see if it was on the list of Capitol Police list. Similarly, the Pride flag is a federal and state, it's not a holiday, but it's a celebration. Could we somehow add language to our policy that says that we would also, as of right, fly the same flags as are being flown?
Well, actually, the Capitol Police, I do not believe flies those flags. But I can, that's something I can check on.
Okay, that's something to check.
But I would, I just think it's dangerous to specifically reference some flags and not others. But now, you know, like Slackwoman Raven mentioned, you know the calendar of events. Juneteenth is June 19th. So you know that in prior, you're going to place that yourselves on the agenda and vote for that to be approved. And I'm sure without any, you know.
Yeah, or the proclamations. We know what the proclamations are year after year. We could even, like, sit down and let's just make it up, January, and say, we know that we have these 15 proclamations, these months of designation where there's a proclamation and we're going to just false sweep, I don't know if those are the right words, blanket, reset our calendar and then treat the others, you know, as they come in.
I would agree with that, because I think if you start singling out certain ones to the exclusion of others, you're going to get back with, you know, controversial pushback. So I think the way the policy is being proposed is just right.
Right, I wasn't trying to single out specific flags. I was trying to suggest that there might be a standard where we could, you know, certain flags would just be, as, like I said, as of right, we wouldn't necessarily have to vote. We could, we could just say these, by this standard, these flags would be flown.
Right, and again, I leave that to, I mean, proclamations by the First Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen collectively. But again, what, I just think that singling out, I agree that any particular flags, then there is a reaction to that. But again, however, if there is a list that should be included or you could even have a memo separate and apart from this published flag policy on proclamations, I'm just trying to suggest.
Is that a legal memo? Is it like, it would be an attachment to the policy?
Well, no, I am saying, I don't think that that's necessary in the flag policy to have a listing of particular flags unless that's the collective decision of the board. But.
I mean, there could be something in the future, five or six, 10 years from now, there may be something else. So then you're going to have to keep amending. I think having the board, you know, we know which ones, as Lauren said, that we're going to be doing, we've done already. But if somebody else wants to bring something before us, we'll have that discussion and then a vote. But I think that's the proper way to handle it so that we don't get to the, you know, we avoid the third scenario, which is the free-for-all.
All right, so can I keep going with my questions?
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay, great.
You have the floor.
Great. So when Darien passed its flag policy, the town attorney, who, full disclosure, was formerly the Greenwich Town Attorney, he raised the point of a legal risk of biased lawsuits. And I'm just wondering, is Greenwich, are we currently with no policy or potentially with a proposed flag policy? Are we at any sort of legal risk?
That's a twofold question.
Okay.
I think there is a legal risk for whatever anybody does. Anybody can sue for anything, right, wrong or indifferent, right? So that, I don't want to opine on that latter part of the answer. As to the former, I did read Wayne Fox's memorandums, et cetera, for the submission on the flag policy to Darien. And I, Darien is distinguished, because Darien's a total ban. And in actuality, he recommended the hybrid model, which is what this model is. So I think that, true, the hybrid model, if you approve some or others, does give some exposure, but you want, it appears to me that the town needs that latitude or wants that latitude to celebrate the traditions it always has.
Great, thank you. All right, and then, so we've sort of touched upon it, but how does this policy, this proposed policy, get adopted? Is it the three of us who vote? Or is it an administrative policy that just gets posted? And what's the difference between a policy and an ordinance? And I'll just note, Darien's is a policy and Boston's is an ordinance. So not being a lawyer, I don't know what the difference is between those.
Well, here, obviously, we have policies and ordinances. Ordinances have to go to the legislative body of the RTM for adoption into the town charter and code. And policy is a little bit more fluid, because it's, so it would be, it does say Board of Selectmen's flag policy, so this would be put to a vote, my understanding is. So it would be a policy of the town up until the time that it is changed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, great. And then my last question is really, it's really a question for my colleagues. You know, we're having a first read at a very quiet time in August, when people are out of town, they're taking their kids back to school. And there really wasn't a lot of notice about this. I mean, we met the legal FOIA requirement, but there was only less than 48 hours of notice. I'm wondering if we could have a real first read after Labor Day?
I mean, I think people right now, I get emails all the time and calls from people that are out of town, July, June, August, like it's, you know, September, October, November. I don't think it's needed, but certainly I don't care, because, you know, we're doing this for transparency purposes, right? So if you want to push it back two weeks, I'm okay with it. I don't think it's needed, but I'm, I would always, we'll err in the side of caution if my colleagues want to.
Or just, we've done three reads. I would just say, let's do a second and a third, rather than rename the second the first. We're trying to build consensus. I have no issue with having more discussion or dialogue, but I wouldn't call it a second first. I'd go to a second and a third.
Yeah, we could actually touch base next, you know, spend a few minutes, see what the feedback is and then the following. So a month from now would be, we would take a vote. This way, again, people who may be out of town, but, you know, they seem to be paying attention, because they get emails on lots of things. But yeah, that's, I'm fine with it.
Well, great, so thank you. I would like a second chance for our public to weigh in before we took a vote. You know, what's driving all of my concern is I absolutely want to protect the town from, you know, potential hate. I also, though, don't want to, you know, unintentionally create a tool for exclusion in any way. So I don't want to single out any specific flags. But there has been concern about, you know, do we, do we protect, you know, a very cherished tradition, flying the Pride and Juneteenth flags? And I'd like to see that happen. And that, so that concludes my questions.
Yeah, thank you.
And that has my support. I'm totally fine, like, setting out a, you know, we're going to agree, you know, just like we agree on our Board of Selectmen meeting schedule, we're going to agree on these ceremonies and proclamations and flag raising for the calendar year. I'm very open to that. I support it.
Yeah, again, and my whole purpose was to get a policy on the books to protect Greenwich. And I've mentioned this for several months. We've had a couple of flag raisings where I've had comments and attacks directed at me and, you know, requests that I thought were inappropriate. So this is all about putting a policy on the books here, as the Supreme Court recommended, as Attorney Fox, Wayne Fox, recommended to Darien, as, and you've done the research here, Laura, so thank you for being so thorough. I do, would like the First Selectmen to reserve the sole discretion to raise the flags of the Yankees, Steelers and the Celtics again.
Well, did you, did you read Buffalo Billups? Fred, did you read Boston's ordinance? It specifically mentions sports flags.
Okay, we can add it.
I would say Boston's a little bit more, bigger sports town than Greenwich with, without having its own franchise. I'm not saying the fan base is any less. I'm just saying.
I haven't polled my colleagues. I may be outvoted on this one, but.
But if, without their own franchise, because I will say, because I did look, obviously, at the city of Boston and it talked about only city teams as well. So I don't know how that could apply here where there is a larger cross-section.
I guarantee you, there will be no Red Sox flag flying over Greenwich Town Hall. I'm sorry, Lauren, they're not going to put the pinstripes in Boston. All right, no, thank you. This is very helpful, I think.
I believe Representative Meskers is online and would like to speak.
Is he unmuted?
I can promote him, or I'll just unmute him.
And if there's anybody else that wants to, yeah, just get on deck. Yeah.
Can you?
Yeah, just.
Can you hear me?
Steve Meskers to be followed by Lucy Von Brockel and anybody else? Alison Khan and Paul Capielli. Okay.
So I read the, the.
Can you, can you?
Speak loudly.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Is this loud enough?
It's kind of faint. Yeah, it may not, it may not be you. We've had, we had an issue before.
Hold on, I'm trying to.
Steve, Steve, can you call me?
Absolutely, this is still too soft?
It is. If you call me, I'll put your, the phone up to the microphone.
And then for those on Zoom, I have to mute Zoom, I think. Well, you may get a feedback, but we really need to hear Steve in the room.
One second. Okay, Steve, you're up.
All right, so I'm going to mute my. My, that should take the loop out, is that okay?
It probably should, yeah.
Go off your audio on your computer.
Does he have to get off the computer?
I muted my computer.
You may, you may have to.
You have to disable.
Yeah, you may have to disable the computer, sorry. Oh, yeah, that's much better, Steve.
Is that, is that okay?
Perfect.
You can leave Zoom.
All right, good, give it a shot.
I'm leaving the meeting.
Awesome.
Perfect. Much better. Thanks.
So I read the, the proposed rule and I was very concerned about it. I think I understand the comfort level I'm hearing now. But what I heard from the lawyer, and this specific, I guess, back to the lawyer, what I heard was there was a question about free speech versus government speech. Right? So one being free speech, one being government speech. And that's why we're moving forward with this, with this policy. And the policy is to create government speech, to have it authorized by the Selectmen's office. It seems to me that the easiest way to resolve the issue is to make, is to reflect the fact that over the last two years, that the flags that have been flown at Town Hall represent our government speech and have previously been sanctioned. And that, starting as of today, when you start, I would put as a start date today, future applications for additional flags require the following application process. I think we should, if we're looking to resolve the apprehension of the public, we should, we should summarily grant our sanction it as government speech, the flags that we've allowed to fly at Town Hall. the flags that we've allowed to fly at Town Hall up till now, unless there's an objection to any of the flags we've flown.
So you're saying grandfather the ones we've done?
Yes, and say that they represent our government's speech, they're sanctioned by us, and that future additional applications require a new application.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to say, by like, setting the calendar.
Well, you'd be saving us a lot of work, but.
Unless there's an objection, because I'm, I'm also concerned, however the future elections go, I think the issues of the free speech now, in a polarized society, and Juneteenth and the Pride specifically, but any other flags that we've flown, that people would try to prohibit them. And so absence that, I think we grandfather them in. And make them, sanction them as being part of our government's speech.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Laura, and I'll, let me follow up with Laura on that, because something like that, could we, yeah, could we, we'd have to redo this a little bit. Again, I.
Well, that's what the, that's what the reading's for.
Yeah, yeah.
See if we can broaden the scope. And secondly, you know, Fred, I was a little annoyed, but I'm happier now, so I won't make it, you know, or be aggressive on it. I think this issue that arose on the gay pride flag, which I'd like the Selectmen's Office to do and look at on policy, is the placement of cameras in front of the, of Town Hall. Because as we're going to be in, using our government's speech, as we're going to call the flags we fly government's speech, I think it's fair to have cameras, because if we have, we can't resolve the lawn sign issue, I, we want to know who's placing lawn signs that we deem unacceptable on, on, on town property.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So we do have flag, uh, flags, we do have cameras. In this case, they were out of reach, the, of the scope of the, the cameras' reach, unfortunately. So I know we were looking at that, but we're also looking at that. Funny you bring that up. We've had some graffiti over at the Board of Education building that we had to scrub yesterday, and we've had issues there for several months of kids putting, you know, some not-so-nice words up. So we're putting cameras up there, and just as you said, one, one of the benches yesterday, they did it probably the night before, was just out of reach of the cameras. So we're, now we're, I'm working with Tom over at the BOE to try and see if we can get something else up there, just, and also monitor as much as we can with the police department, because there's nothing worse than, than seeing things defaced, and, you know, the dead of night, and then we have to go and clean it, and then, you know, it goes back up again three days later. So we are working on that, and I will circle back with Building, Construction, and Management here today.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'd love to hear that. It'd only be a pain or difficult. In conjunction with the flag policy, that there is a policy, because the flags become a statement of the town, that there's a, some kind of camera policy in front of Town Hall, so that we can, whatever the flags we choose as a town to fly, we, we feel they should be respected.
Yeah, if there's, certainly if there's a camera on somebody, it would deter bad, bad behavior. So I, you know, I'm a believer of that. So I will circle back with Building, Construction, and Management later today. I just wrote it down, so that's, I know we are working on that as we speak, but I'll see where we are on it.
And, and in lieu of anything else, if that, if the issue of backdating or grandfathering, I would suggest that we might want to include the scope of all flags raised at the state Capitol by de facto are deemed to be approved, unless we think we're not happy.
Yeah, I would personally not want to go that far, because I don't know, you know, you could have an administration in Hartford that has a very different view on the people here in Greenwich, and the people in Fairfield County, or the people in New London. I think that goes a little too far, but I like your first idea better.
Okay, perfect, well, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm out of the meeting now, so I will leave you guys.
All right, thank, thank you, Steve. Bye-bye. Thank you, Laura, appreciate that. Lucy Von Brockel to be followed by Allison, to be followed by Paul.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to raise a couple of concerns. One is that the, you know, I understand the intent of the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, promises being made, but I feel like the policy needs to codify a few things to make sure that there is no problem here. And I would note that the policy itself does say that it's not necessarily just the Board of Selectmen making this decision, but that, you know, that the First Selectmen alone can make the decision by determining what gets a proclamation. So I would argue that that should be clarified, whether there's a vote required, and all of that. I also, I'm concerned that, that taking the SCOTUS decision to, you know, the courts have looked at this, and they, they have a test that they put to all of these issues. And our situation is slightly different than Boston's. And in the sense that we did have something of a policy, people did have to get approvals. You didn't just let anyone raise a flag. There was, there's generally a proclamation with them, I'm assuming. And that proclamation is basically government's speech. So we've always had government's speech here. Boston didn't. They, they just let anyone raise them. There wasn't necessarily an endorsement of the city. But we've been doing that. So we need to kind of look at those issues. And I would note that in the concurrent statement that Alito, Gorsuch, and Kavanaugh put out, that they raised the issue of, just because the flag pole is not a public forum, doesn't mean that what you're putting up there is government's speech. So there is potential there for vulnerability for the town, and I, I think that needs to be looked at more closely. You know, if you were to put something up that isn't really, you know, let's say you want, let's say you put up a commercial flag for a commercial, a corporation who was, I know you wouldn't, but I'm saying that we need to make sure that some of this stuff is covered.
It's not just we wouldn't, we can't. Like, think about when we tried to do advertising on Greenwich Avenue, the, the banners. There's planning and zoning about advertising.
I know, but I would point out that those were up for a long time anyway. And they went up anyway, because there was no clarity.
Now, planning and zoning clarified that.
Yeah, exactly, but it happened after the fact, and I think we should get this right the first time. And I'm also concerned that, you know, I, I don't want to see the flags of reprehensible organizations showing up on our flag pole. Nobody does. But I do think there's a danger here of, of decisions being made on the fly, and, and I think that that's a problem. I'll point out that the former president did not issue Pride proclamations as the previous presidents had done. He skipped it. You know, this could happen here. This is not a, this is not a national or state holiday. You know, we need to be careful about these things.
That's why we're writing the policy the way we're doing it, so we would respond to an application, the public would have time to respond to it, so you wouldn't have that to the situation you're talking about.
Right, but I would argue that you need to.
It's already here. It's in the policy. It's, it, this, the way it's written here addresses that.
All right, it didn't, in my mind, but I would hope that, that we're a little bit more careful about it. I do think, you know, what we're essentially doing, regardless of whether or not we're doing the right thing, is taking something that's inclusive and inherently making it exclusive. And we have to be really, really careful about that. And I just want to make sure that the policy is careful about that, because anyone seeing this could say, well, maybe my group wouldn't be accepted by the town, and maybe it wouldn't be accepted by the town, and that would create controversy itself. We're not eliminating controversy with this policy. We're just protecting ourselves from First Amendment violations, and I think we just need to be very, very careful about this, that's all.
Thank you. And again, I think that's the reason why we're doing the hybrid, is to avoid the third, which would, could get us into a lot more trouble. Next up is Allison with Paul on deck. Allison Khan.
Good morning, and a good morning. Thank you, first of all, just thank you for everything that you do every day in the town, all of us, all Greenwich residents, and for having this conference.
Now it is, thank you. Good morning. I can project, but better if I don't have to. First, I did a very official Google search while we were researching, and just did see that the Capitol Police in Connecticut do have a list, and even images of all the flags they fly, which include Juneteenth, which include Pride, which includes a transgender, Progress, Pride flag as well. And they've been doing it for several years. So recognizing Greenwich is distinct from Connecticut, but I know that question came up, so, just answering it with my, my set of Google facts.
Back to Google.
Yeah, so I, I agree with a lot of the questions that have been raised, really like Rep. Mesker's suggestion about grandfathering in. I have a strong level of confidence that our leaders today would continue to support the traditions that we've, that we've upheld in our town, including the more, ones that some people might deem more sociopolitical or controversial. I would argue they're not, but they have been turned into that. But I do worry about if you're setting something and writing in stone legally for precedent for future, what that configuration could look like. And, and frankly, just the environment in which we're operating and opening things for public discussion, does that then sway the decisioning that you might be pressured to, to make? And so the threat, it feels real. And I, what I wanted to do is just contextualize a little bit, for those in the room and for those in our community, why something so seemingly innocuous, like a flag policy, is actually so critical, and is raising these, this many questions, and discussion, and emotions as well. And let's start just by being clear about why we're having this conversation today. And it is because a small but vocal minority of extremists in this town, and elsewhere in towns around the country, have raised their voices to express discontent about flags that have been raised in support of those most marginalized. And, you know, we've mentioned the Pride flag for LGBTQ residents, we've mentioned Juneteenth for Black and African-American people. And, you know, I know Ukraine, and our comrades that are, comrades that are fighting over there for their lives and their freedom as well. And one doesn't need to look any further than the hateful groomer signs that were erected in the veil of the night following Pride here in our very own town, in which hundreds, hundreds of residents attended and celebrated together to see the writing on the wall there, and what's at stake. You know, that a flag is much more than just a piece of fabric. It is not just ceremonial. It's a concrete and powerful marker that demonstrates that we don't bow to bullies, that we're principled, we have integrity, we support all of the people in our community, we're willing to stand up for what's right and what's just. I do support the flag policy, as long as it enables those groups that have raised the flag previously to be allowed to continue their important traditions with the full support of the town. It feels particularly vulnerable in this moment. I don't know if everyone saw the news, there were trending headlines a couple of days ago, woman, not LGBTQ identified, but an ally, was murdered in cold blood outside of her store in California, 60 miles outside of LA, just a couple of days ago, for flying a Pride flag outside of her store. So it is much, a flag is much more than just fabric, just a symbol. We've seen it even here in our town, right, that having a flag up, the Pride flag up, it means that an LGBTQ young person who's getting bullied at school, or maybe rejected at home, can walk by Town Hall and see that somebody thinks their life is worth living. We've met people like this, who've told us this story in our town after seeing the Pride flag. We met older residents who were crying, and told us, if only Town Hall raised the Pride flag decades ago, maybe their life would have turned out differently, better. We've met newly arrived residents, who said they feared they would feel alone in our town, until they saw the flag rise up, and they realized that this was a place they could call home. We raised the flag so our children can feel proud, not fearful or ashamed, and they're very patient today. We raised the flag so that people know that our elected officials acknowledge our humanity. We raised the flag to remind us of how far we've come, and how we can't go back. It's not a partisan issue. Symbols matter, the threats are real. Lowering a flag has long been a sign of surrender in the United States, so let our flags fly high. Thank you, I appreciate the discussion.
Thank, thank you, Allison, and as always, your correspondence over the years. Yeah, I think that's, you know, I know you're a little concerned about the, you know, having to vote on this, or the, the discussion, but we do that with everything, and there's no guarantee that in 10 years, you know, things like, whether it's just policy about financing may change, and, you know, when it's been this way for 100 years. You know, that's, you leave that up to the, the future. But I think by establishing the traditions, they pretty much held over the years, which is good. But this is a way to, A, stay away from the free-for-all that we, no one wants, and where you may not be able to, you may be dealing with some things that may be distasteful to a lot of people, or the total ban, except for the three flags, which we didn't want either. So this really does put it back in the hands of the people, and for the people in the town to also weigh in on it, like they're doing today. So I think this is, you know, nothing's ever perfect, but you keep, that's why we do what we do, we try to keep doing it. And I think this, is getting something in writing is, is a good thing for the town going forward. So we can try to avoid most of the, you're never going to avoid everything, but you certainly can put some things to bed and allow for public discussion. So thank you for your, for your words. Paul, back in cleanup. Oh, and to be followed by Karen Fasliotis, thank you.
Thank you, I actually came here today with father to Paul Capielli. Came here with father today to really support the, the tax proposal as it relates to elderly and disabled citizens. But this is a great conversation. I had a question. When these decisions may or may not be made, as it relates to which flag goes up, would that be in a public forum? Would the, would the citizens know the votes of the select people?
Yeah, so like, today we're doing the first read, and usually it's the second read, and we do the vote.
I mean, down the road, if this policy, which I seem to like, if it passes, and you decide to raise a flag or not raise a flag, would that be public?
Oh, yeah, just like this is, everything is recorded, everything is on record, so your, your votes last forever.
So I'd, you know, I'd like to, you know, propose the fact that there'll, there'll actually be a fourth read here, because I don't think there's any place for hate in this town. I think that there is, there is inclusion. I think in the past decade or so, we've seen a flood of, of inclusion and symbolism to promote that inclusion. I'd be concerned that if we did specifically add in particular flags right now, and we had more awareness come down the road, that those flags didn't make the cutoff as of this date. So what I'd really be interested in is the fourth read, which is, I have the choice to vote or not vote for you based on what I presume to be either ignorance, or, you know, or acceptance. So I do promote, I do think the policy that's being suggested is good, and it allows for that fourth read on election day, every election day. I think that something like this has so much emotion, and so much opinion based in it, that I think putting it in the hands of the select people, the elected officials, is important, because that, those opinions and those emotions are something that we hope and pray that you guys have, you know, have the heartbeat of. And as a voter, we, we react to that. So that's why I, I would, I agree with this, this policy. I think the fourth read is the, is the most important.
Thank, thank you. I never heard it described like that, but that's interesting. Thank you, Paul. Karen Fasliotis, member of our BET.
Thank you, and thank you for considering this policy. I just wanted to express support for the policy, and also to express support for what has been said here today. I'm looking at it two ways, because there are recurring holidays that we do fly flags for, and they do represent civic pride. I know that I started the Greek Independence Day flag raising, and we started with one person, and now we're up to over, over 100 people.
It was during the pandemic, dude.
So it does, it does reflect civic pride, and it does reflect the community. I, I am kind of conflicted with how you set the recurring, because I'd hate to see everybody coming 30 days before, every year, and, you know, flooding your agenda. I like the setting the agenda, the beginning of the year approach, but then again, I also see merit in grandfathering those. But then you'd have to be very careful if you do that, because you might forget one, and then, you know, didn't make the list for whatever reason, go back and amend it, and it just becomes one of those snowballing effects. But I do think that, you know, for those that feel excluded, they should not feel excluded. I think that we are making great strides in this community for inclusion. You know, when I first came here many years ago, being a Greek, and Greek Orthodox was not very popular in town. Now we've got a big Greek community here. So, you know, we go through evolution in this town, and I've seen the evolution in this town. And I think that this is a great first step, and how we tweak it is the question. But all for it.
Well, thank you. And the Greek Independence Day flag is one of the ones that we, we look forward to, and they're, they are very special, so. And that's what we're trying to, with this policy, trying to preserve. So, and that's what we're trying to, with this policy, trying to preserve those traditions. So, all right, well, thank you. I don't see any other ones.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to conclude and say, I'm not surprised, but I'm still very proud of us that we have had such a constructive and civil conversation. And can, can we ask our town legal department to provide us what we were talking about, some sort of language that we would then memorialize that the three of us have committed, that we will grandfather?
It would, it was, it would save us on future boards a lot of work and also try to avoid the, you know, the instance where maybe somebody forgot and then they'll be mad at the board. And so, and you couldn't easily forget some things, but, you know, the, most of these ones we, we know already. So I think, you know, I think it's a very healthy suggestion, but we'll certainly, well, that's why we're doing this, so we could work on this and with Laura and look forward to an even better amended policy. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
That was very good. Okay, next is up is the request to extend senior and disabled homeowners' tax relief. And Lori Contadino from the Commission on Aging is here.
Kip Bergweger of the RTM.
This is something I remember.
She's also on the board of the Commission on Aging.
Morning, Kip.
Good morning. Thank you very much for hearing us this morning.
Good to see you.
As noted, the Commission on Aging is requested that the board, requesting that the Board of Selectmen amend, approve an amendment to the property tax relief ordinance. And I'll give you a brief history of this matter, which will clarify this request. The state has two programs that provide property tax relief for seniors ages 65 and older and persons who are totally and permanently disabled. One program is established by the state and administered by various municipalities. It was first enacted in 1985. The other program authorizes Connecticut municipalities to develop a property tax relief program for seniors ages 65 and older and for persons who are totally and permanently disabled. In the year 2000, Greenwich adopted a property tax relief program, but only for seniors pursuant to the state statute. The original version and subsequent enactments each contained five-year sunset clauses resulting in periodic reenactments of the ordinance. In 2019, the Commission on Aging moved to extend the ordinance and the Board of Selectmen revised the program by extending it not only to seniors, but to totally disabled homeowners. The Board of Selectmen and the BET approved the revised version unanimously and the RTM adopted it unanimously. That current version contains a sunset clause, which will cause the ordinance to expire on June 30, 2024, next June, if it is not extended by December 31 of this year. As a sponsor of the Greenwich seniors and consistent with Greenwich being an age-friendly town, the Commission on Aging has voted unanimously to move to extend the sunset clause by five more years. Under the amended version, the ordinance would expire on June 30, 2028, I'm sorry, June 20, 30, 2029, if it is not extended by December 31, 2028. And we are requesting that the Board of Selectmen adopt this amendment and then we'll refer it to the BET and the RTM. We have sent to the board a, the actual language of the amendment. It does nothing more than change the dates, and it's the last section in the ordinance. Lori is here to help answer any questions you might have, but I would just note that this has been unanimously adopted before and there's no problem, there's no harm in doing that again.
Kip, thank you so much. I was on the RTM when we did this, this was a while ago, so I know it's very popular and certainly I know, is, my one question is, is this time sensitive?
Yes.
It is? Okay, I mean, I know I'm voting on this and I'm sure, this is something that's very important to our community, but I'm sure my colleagues would probably agree on that to waive the first read.
I can explain why it's time sensitive.
You mean the second read?
Because it has to be adopted by the RTM this year and we need to make, and we have to go through the BET, so we have to make all the dates that are necessary to get onto the calls.
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee anybody from the public reaching out being against this, and it's because it's time sensitive, we do have a history of waiving a second read because of when something's time sensitive. So, thank, thank you so much, and thank you, Lori. Appreciate it. So you want to, is there a motion to waive?
Well, are we going to, did Lori want to add any?
Did you?
Did you want to add anything?
Did you have any questions? I know Lori was going to answer.
Lori Contadino, Director of the Greenwich Commission on Aging. Our assessor happily provided us with some granular detail about utilization over the past five years. And if you look at that chart, we're not trending upward in terms of adding more individuals. It's actually slightly trending downward. And I did request, as Lauren provided me this morning, a breakdown of how many seniors and how many permanently disabled individuals. And at last count, it was eight permanently disabled individuals and the remainder of those on the program were older adults 65 and older. And of course, as she pointed out, those that are permanently disabled, once they turn 65, then they're senior. So that number changes every year depending upon their status and whatnot. But this is a really important program. It does help many older adults in our community and, you know, popular to perhaps, or contrary to popular belief, there are many in this town that do not have robust incomes and do rely on social security pension benefits, perhaps only. And this, as a homeowner, does help individuals age in place and stay in our town.
So we're going to turn 65 before this expires.
Speak for yourself.
Some of us.
Speak for yourself.
Maybe we can raise a flag for that.
Some of us just look like we're going to turn 65. I just, I just have one question. I'm, I'm happy to waive the second read, but should we be concerned that the demand has gone down? Do we, do we need to better promote this program to our community?
I think it's important that we continuously try to heighten awareness and we did include a little announcement, if you will, that went out with tax bills, raising awareness. So I can check and see if that's still occurring and any other way perhaps that we could get the word out so that more people can avail themselves of this program.
Yeah, that's a great, great point.
Also, I might note that if you go into the assessor's office, you can pick up one of these, which tells you all about the senior relief program.
Okay. That's good. No, thank you. Yeah, I remember sometimes people, I think, I had an aunt, my Aunt Jenny, many years ago, who I told her about the program, and she goes, "Oh, it's okay, Freddie," and she just would not, she didn't want to do it. And she looked at it a different way, and I tried to explain to her that she had earned this, she had worked here and volunteered here and couldn't get her to take advantage of this. I mean, you may get some of that. Some people just look at it very differently. I know, you know, that's, growing up, I, I saw that in my own family. So, you know, I think maybe also just telling people that it's something that's, it's nothing wrong with doing it, you, they paid their dues and this is something that the town can do for them to make things a little bit easier when maybe they're on a fixed income. So, but I, I lost the battle at my aunt, but I'm sure maybe we could do a little bit better. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, so Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to extend the senior and disabled homeowners' tax relief to expire June 30, 2029.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
Paul is in favor. Fred Camillo says yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. And last item is discussion to, of a request to purchase Zero Chapel Lane from the town of Greenwich. And we have William Roberts here, and this is our first, in four years, our first request like this.
So, I, actually, I have a process question.
Yeah, one, two.
Related, related to this agenda item. Do we always hear this in our regular meetings, something like this, or would we, why would we not have it in an executive session?
My take on this, I don't know if Laura's still here or Barbara's here.
Barbara's here.
In the past, when we've talked about public lands, I was on a committee when I was Chair of the Parks Board, I mean, 20 something years ago, and it was public, it was all public about what to decide with these lands because they belong to the town. It's not something that we would do in, in seclusion. And so we had meetings that were, this committee, that were public. And I know when I was on the, in the state legislature, once in a blue moon, they tried, they would ask if they, if they wanted, if they, we would accept land conveyed to us from the state. And I could look, point to the piece of land over on Sound Beach going towards the post road coming from Old Greenwich, right across, right up against the 95 highway is now owned by the town, but the state gave it to us, conveyed it to us. So it's always been public and I think.
I think you have a choice.
Yeah.
I know.
Okay.
And I can, I can certainly check the statute on that, but I do think you would have the choice to discuss this in executive session if you want to, but you don't have.
Yeah, because it's public land, I would think, I would, that someone else may claim it too. So this, having this, or someone else may say, well, you know, that's town land and I, you know, as a taxpayer, I just foresee somebody saying, why did you guys decide it in private? But that's why I would think, but.
I'm, I'm very happy to have a public conversation about it. I just want to, I don't want to presume that I understand all the legal implications and so I just wanted to raise that point.
Very, very reasonable. Hey, William?
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my fellow Greenwich citizens. I'm William Roberts. By way of introduction, my wife and I moved here a year and a half ago after both serving in the military for about 10 years. And while this is not the purpose of my time here today, I think it speaks a lot that we're in public discussion of the, the flag policy, having served our nation's flag for such a long time. So I, it's part of the reason we love Greenwich.
Thank you.
So I'm here today to talk about Zero Chapel Lane, which runs behind and abutting my house at 17 Chapel, my neighbor Maria Chang's house at 13 Chapel, and our neighbor Irene Parker at 11 Chapel Lane. To the best of my knowledge, our houses were all built Sears and Roebuck's home in 1911. They're beautiful little craftsman houses, which my wife Peyton and I are trying to restore. And we bought our home in March of 2023, Maria bought hers in 2003, and Irene bought hers in 2004. So longstanding owners other than ourselves, we plan to be there for a while and let our kids walk to school for the next 20 years, hopefully. The right of way looks like it was created in about 1917. Again, it's, it's a little tough to find records going back that far, but it looks like that it was granted originally to the United Electric Light and Water Company in June 11, 1917, sorry, yeah, 1917, then recorded in February 18, 1919. The best I can tell, the right of way is unused. We've, we've investigated with Civil Engineering, Department of Public Works, looked into seeing if there's anything running underneath it, there isn't. The current Eversource, or sorry, Frontier Pole that runs along that right of way is actually on our property side, it's not on the right of way. And all three of our garages are actually on the right of way, and it's enclosed by each of our fences. So for the past 90 or so years, we've been maintaining the property as our own, using the property as our own, and for all intents and purposes, it, it is part of our, our land. There, there is, there might be a precedent for it because Zero Fletcher Lane in Pembroke recently sold. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to find the, the land sale document, but I do know that that was returned to the owners of 18 and 20 Fletcher Avenue and then behind them at 31 and 33 Nicholas Avenue. So that might be something we can look into to see exactly how that, that occurred. But the purpose for us trying to, to get this land back is to further maintain it and keep the neighborhood beautiful. And personally, I would like the, the land that I recently found out, the owners of my house previous to me and me have been paying tax on since 1917. Interestingly enough, I'm taxed at 10,019 square feet. My land survey has 9,300 square feet. If you take the delta between those two, you get the exact dimensions of the right of way. So ironically, I've been paying tax on it for, I mean, three months is not a big deal for me, but for the, you know, 100 years previous to that, it might add up a little bit. But thank you for hearing me today, and I'd love to hear any of your questions.
Great, great research. Welcome to Greenwich. Thank you for your service. Present a really good case. You know, it's, it's land that's been, as you said, taken care of by private citizens, used by private citizens. The town has not used it for, at all for anything. I would just, we'll ask and make sure that there's just nothing, you know, that we're not seeing in this piece of land, because everything so far, the way it looks is, you know, I have no problem at all doing, I just want to make sure that we're not missing anything. Like, as I said, I was on a committee 22, 23 years ago to look at properties like this and see what to do with them, because the town was trying to, you know, look at what we can sell and not everybody wanted them and sometime, and then in some cases, they went, town decided to keep them. The old Riverside Lane, there was a case back in 2008 where a piece of land the town owned was between a bunch of houses and the kids went over there and they took it over and they made a softball field and they ended up doing a movie about it. I got interviewed, I don't know where the movie went, but it was mini, it was like Fenway Park, and they had advertisers on the outfield wall, they had scoreboards, I played one game there. The neighbors who were friends of mine did not like it. So again, it became very controversial.
Sounds like Sandlot.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I thought it was great. I didn't live there, and so a couple of my friends that lived there, not all, but a couple of, Jason there, were mad at me for a few months, but it, so this has happened before. And so I just want to double check with this to make sure with our town attorney, but makes, certainly makes sense, especially if you're, you're paying tax on it. That's a pretty good case, but I don't know if my colleagues have any thing to add.
Yeah, I, I don't know, like, what our next steps are and who we need to get feedback or guidance from. And when I said, when I see obtain, I assume that's for a price?
Yeah.
But I guess we would take into consideration that the owners have been paying the taxes on the property, so that might factor into the sale, I would imagine.
Exactly, Mr. Raven. That's, that's why I said obtain instead of purchase or, you know, a sheet or something. It, I could see it going either way. I know personally, I've been paying, I say I, the homeowners previous to me and me have been paying property tax on it for a long time, but obviously there needs to be assessed fair value, which I'm a real estate agent now, so I could tell you that I, I find that that piece of land, which is 12 feet wide and about 180 feet long.
I was going to say, you might not, you might not want to disclose any cost information at this point, because I was going to, I'm going to jump in and say, conceptually, this is a good conversation if we actually, if, when we get to the point of negotiating a sale or what, a transfer, whatever you want to say, I think that does need to be in executive session.
Yeah, and there's, there's a history, there's a blueprint for this, so we'll look into that. We've, this has been, not the first time, it's the first time we've heard it, so it's kind of all new to us, but it's, it's been done before. So we'll see what, how we've handled it in the past, and we'll be back to you in, in the coming weeks. So we'll put you on the agenda again for the second read.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good to see you, William.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Okay. Public comment, period.
I think we should go back to old business with Ann Young if we can get her on the phone.
Is she still on?
Yes, she should.
I forgot all about it.
Please give Ken's cell phone a call. Ann.
Yeah, here she is. Ann, I've got you on speakerphone.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Can we hear her? Ann, okay now?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, I can. Can you?
Hi, thank you very much for considering my application from two weeks ago.
Can anyone hear her? Okay?
We can, we can hear you, go ahead.
You can make your presentation, Ann.
Very good. I'm here because two weeks ago, I had submitted an application for the Historic District Commission to be appointed the study committee for Putnam Cottage as they seek to receive local historic property designation. local historic property designation that is recognized by both the town of Greenwich and the state of Connecticut.
Thank you, Ann. I have not heard anything negative about this.
Only positive.
Only, yeah, only positive and it's something that we would have, could have voted on two weeks ago, but we just wanted to make sure because it wasn't time sensitive. But I don't think my colleagues have heard anything other than nice things, so we're all set to, to vote.
All right.
That would be lovely.
Thank you. And sorry about that, the glitch there, but glad we got it done. So thank you.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to appoint the Historic District Commission to be the study committee for the Putnam Cottage Naps Tavern.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
Paul is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Okay. Ann, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ann.
Thanks for your patience. Okay, coming to the end, little public comment section, don't see anybody raising their hand. Appointments and nominations?
Yes, we have some. So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the nomination of Tom Zach as a returning member of the Alarm Appeals Board, position R3 for a term expiring 6/30/2027.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
Paul is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we appoint Jacqueline Hammack to serve on the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee as a new member for a term expiring 6/30/2026.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
Paul is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we appoint Timothy Drinkall as a new member of the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2026.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
Paul is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
And finally, Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Tom Broadhurst to serve as a regular member of the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2026.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
Paul is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thank you very much, Lauren, for that. Seeing no other business before the board is our motion to adjourn.
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWiggin, I second.
Paul is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWiggin, yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Ken. Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, Don, behind the wall. And thank everybody for attending. Appreciate it.
Ditto.